Who we waiting on? Who we waiting on over there? This is Janus's day.
How are you?
I was stalling for you. All right, let's call this Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting to order, August 14th, 2017. Mr. Slade, you start us off with an invocation to start tonight.
Let's pray before we begin. Lord God, thank you for the Creator God that you are. Thank you for the mercies that you bestow on us and you make those do every morning. Father, thank you that you've given these men the wisdom and discernment that they need. You've promised, Lord, to give it to them when they ask. And so, Father, I pray that you would give them the wisdom and discernment they need to make good and wise decisions that are in the interest of everyone in the county. Christ sent them.
All right, Mr. Slade, I think the only thing we had on our agenda tonight was discussion of our Rankin County Development Ordinance. So if you would narrate us through The issues on the Development Ordinance.
Actually, this is going to be a little bit of a tag team between myself and Tim Parker, our consulting engineer. And so, Tim is going to walk us through, Daniel, the proposed revisions to the August 10, I'm sorry, to the Development Ordinance that resulted from the August 10 meeting.
Oh, never mind, he's got it right here.
He should have, Tim.
He's got it.
How's everybody?
All right.
A little traffic issue getting here. Y'all don't know anything about that, do you?
Dane County Supervisor didn't do anything about the traffic.
Can't get anything to you. All right, Mr. Slade, you think the best thing to do is just start from the top of that discussion point?
Sort of walk us through. So the items in black that you found there are as they, you know, the most recent version, the items in red are the suggested revisions as per the conversations that we had with the developer representatives.
Okay, we'll start with Section 102.06. And this arises, there was a question about, a couple of folks had questions about when I'm dividing land, but I've got frontage on the road. I come in and they said subdivision regulations are applicable or, there was just some questions there. So basically, what we put in there, we added the sentence that said that whenever you're subdividing land into two or more parcels, it requires a pre-application conference. It doesn't say you've got to do X, Y, Z in the subdivision Development Ordinance. It used to be subdivision regulations. It just says we've got to have a pre-application conference. So that's a meeting to discuss what they're going to be doing. Are they, do they have a piece of land that has frontage on a road and they want to just divide it into three lots that all has frontage on the road? That kind of thing. That might be handled different than if they wanted to develop it into six lots, four of which weren't on the road, and they wanted a private drive in there. So all that we're sitting out here is, we've got to have a pre-development conference with the person wanting to do that so we can just decide then what action to take. It also goes on to say that when you're dividing land, that a platting description by survey shall be furnished instead of just having some file at the courthouse that's not a legal survey.
So if you have your land divided and have it surveyed out, that won't suffice? We have to have a engineer do a plat? Is that what you're saying?
No. If you have, if you had 10 acres and you wanted to divide it into two parcels, you got to provide the county with two plats stamped by retro survey describing those two parcels.
Before our conference? I mean, before we'll have a conference?
We won't have a conference on it. You wouldn't have one.
It says a pre-application conference shall require a pre-application conference.
Yeah, but that was basically, I think the way I understood that was that it kind of gave you, that way you as a potential landowner would make sure you understood everything that keep, prevents you from, I guess, getting you in a situation that could cost you because it wasn't surveyed right, or you were trying to do something where it wasn't zoned right or whatever. Basically, just an informative, now, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the way I understood it. It'd be more or less a way just to give information to that particular person to make sure, or persons, to make sure they're heading in the right direction. And the reason for the survey, and I would think, and I know, I've known this from the past, from best of personal experience, would be that there are designated pins that virtually say, "This is your property." That way, one day if it's sold, you don't go and get in a situation where if this person decides to sell his five acres, you realize, "I was 20 feet off, or I was 10 feet off. This is designated my property." Now, is that the kind of way I looked at that, the way I understood it? For the reasons for it being surveyed?
Yes.
Tim, I'm Troy Maynard here, man. I just want to know, if you get your property surveyed and the surveyor gives you your information, do we then have to go out and get another one done?
No, 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 no. That is the plan.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Well, you asked why?
This subdivision, this, I really have heart, what's the guy's in your district? He was in here last Thursday night, the older guy has a bunch of road frontage, and Buster told him one thing, and he told him something else, you know, he won't do this.
Kale, Tony Kale?
Yeah, I mean, how much road frontage he got on his? 1,000 feet? 1,200 feet?
Yeah.
I got a real problem with county telling them how you spot something about a spot.
He's not, he's not.
As long as it blocks the road.
He's not trying to tell them that. That's not the way I understood that. He bought a new piece of property. And it's just open property. It was, I don't know, I think him and a couple others had bought some property. And it's just an open piece of land, 25, 30 acres there. And so, he just wanted to maybe sell five acres there. Well, he's got the rest of the land. So for somebody just buying that piece of land, and I told him myself, "You need to come in and sit down with them, tell them what your thoughts are," because it turned out it wasn't even zoned right. And so, that kind of, I think Craig can allude to some of it because he met with him, but it kind of gave him an idea of what to do, or what he could do. And the fact of the survey in it, well, that way, if it's surveyed out clean five acres or whatever he's talking about doing, then it's on record that this is it. That way, if he's got, he sells more off of that or decides to subdivide that, it's already defined what's five acres of whatever someone else, a person owns. I think it's kind of protecting the potential buyer also.
So the truth behind how we find ourselves under the existing subdivision regulations is that it's not unusual for us to have landlords that they divide their property larger tract up into multiple parcels, each of which it turns out to have frontage on a public road. There are not issues of access to any of those parcels. You don't have to worry about developing an interior road. You don't have to worry about the condition of any interior access. Remember, each lot would have its own method of access to a public road. So we are trying to set up a way for us to know what's going on without overregarding that. So if they come in and they say, "I'm going to break my piece up into four parcels, each of which will have access on the county road," then there's no reason for us to proceed with issues of, define the roads. Do you have it to be a right of way? Do we need a letter of credit? All those issues sort of just go away. They disappear. There may be some development activity out there where it's a large tract. And you see this a lot, where instead of creating lots that have access on the front, on the road, creating lots that don't have access on the road and they're served by a large tract. Now we have issues. So in both cases, we need a chance to see what they're doing. That's what this language says, pre-application conference.
Just kind of clears up.
Well, from the way this is worded, before we can see what they're doing, we want them all ready to survey each lot and have it pinned off. At this pre-development conference, we may look at it and say, "No, that middle lot's not going to work," and that throws all the other surveys off.
No, this is covering, this paragraph is covering two things. One is just saying, if you're going to divide it, you've got to have a pre-application conference. And then if you do divide it, you've got to have the rest of your survey or survey the most definitely.
After the pre-development.
Most definitely, yes.
That needs to be spelled out a lot better.
I see what you're saying.
Because this is saying, before the pre-development conference, it would be surveyed. And like, somebody just said they got six lots and they all front, and we're looking at it, and we say, "We don't like this from the middle. Now there's drainage." And he says, "Well, that's going to throw everything, and I've already paid for every lot, all these other five to be surveyed."
But see, that's also, and I think you're right.
Steve, what you're saying is it's not clear.
It's not, no, right. At what point is the survey required?
So after you decide what you're going to do with it.
After we have our, after we have our.
Just to clarify then, if we added, in that sentence, if we added, "After said pre-application conference, all land division or subdivision into two or more parcels shall have a plat and description sealed by a registered professional engineer." Just clarify that it's after that?
Yes, yes, I like that.
Based on the results of the pre-application conference.
Yes, yeah, I mean, after we meet and.
Yeah, because that's similar to what the gentleman called you about the other day, Craig. I mean, he just did a, basically a verbal one over the phone to find out kind of which direction I, can I go and should I start? To get the information needed before he messes up.
All right, any more comments on that one before we move on to the next one?
Anything?
I'm good. If anybody's, you good? Steve, you good?
Good.
Bob?
The next one, 2.03.
Doesn't sound very convincing over there.
No, it really, but go ahead.
Nah, he still stamped it, Tim. He got it next.
2.0307, that also goes with, because it's in different sections in the Development Ordinance, it also goes with on the third page, 3.06, 306.0104. And this is dealing with the developer having a warranty of the detention retention basins for a period of five years from the date of acceptance of the street surface wearing course. The, and I think Mr. Weaver spoke to this for, at length, the other day in our meeting. And Craig, I may punt this one to you, but if you flip over to the 3060104, it covers how there is security beyond the developer.
So that's the way that it was discussed in our meeting. And what was more palatable to the developer then is that the idea of them warranting the detention pond five years after the phase of development comes online is very aggressive.
Yep.
And it really, as it was described, it puts the developer in a position where they have contingent liabilities or obligations that would then be evaluated by their lenders, and it will definitely express their ability to do further development. And so, we were trying to be sensitive to that reality. It is a real concern, while also addressing the issue of the fact that we oftentimes have detention ponds that just don't operate the way they're supposed to. We try to strike a happy balance by requiring the developers to warrant the construction and maintenance of the detention pond up through the point where the surface asphalt is installed. Necessarily, that's going to be at the end of the life cycle of the initial development activity. It's going to be as the vast majority of the lots have come online. Okay? So in that respect, there would be the ability for a homeowner association, that the developer would be responsible for an institute to take that responsibility of maintenance on. We tried to introduce in this 3060104, we tried to introduce some beefier provisions in there about how the HOA would be set up to allow for the maintenance schedule for the detention pond, whether that be just.
General maintenance grass and other things, or whether it be issues of removing silt. Okay? So the idea is this, at the time that the wearing surface installation is on, is on the calendar, the engineer is going to, our engineer is going to check the retention pond at the same time. Any issues of the retention pond that are found at that moment have to be corrected by the developer. We still have that ability. It's got a letter of credit still standing on the wearing surface, right? So that would be one of those conditions that it would have to be cleared in order to release a letter of credit. The detention pond is operating properly, is efficient, effective, whatever. So at that moment, it's going to get flipped over to the HOA, and then 3060104 takes over from there. So you can look through there and see the responsibilities that would then fall on the HOA or the property management group as it relates to repairs or maintenance of the detention basin.
Legislation, how that, real quick, we started just first, what were you accomplishing with that?
Getting authority from the legislature for the six largest counties in the state to be able to, in essence, mandate HOA setup as a part of your development oversight responsibilities of county.
Did they talk about anything about the faulting of the HOA or the collapse of an HOA and what the county could have, could do and leave thereof?
I don't remember specifics about that legislation, but my recollection is that it was broad enough to allow the county to step in where there is a defaulted HOA.
It would have to.
Yes, sir.
Have a tax and district on that subject.
Essentially, the county would be in a position of being able to reinstitute the HOA in the event of default, mandate certain things to happen. It was, it's designed more to control existing developments where HOAs have lapsed as opposed to new developments where HOAs are being brought online. The legislation was more geared towards your Mill Creeks and your Council Woods situations as opposed to brand-new HOAs coming online. But it would cover both. This is kind of a hybrid. We're having to sort of thread the needle because we consistently hold the position that the Board of Supervisors does not enforce HOAs. We do not enforce covenants. So what we're doing here is, we're putting the responsibility on the developer, and they have to present all this to Mr. Buster, on the developer to show us in writing how your covenants are set up to handle detention, funding, and maintenance responsibilities. That's on the developer to do that.
And I guess my only question on that is, can they come back after everything's taken over to the HOA? And the HOA decide, "Hey, I think I just want to change the covenants now in a way we're not putting $5 into this account for whatever it is." Can they legally do that?
Yeah, and the answer to that is yes, unless there's something in the restrictive covenants that precludes it. And so, that's one of the items, Daniel, that we would want to double-check that we have clear, that in the covenants itself, it says, "Hey, HOA, after you've been established," and by the way, the developer does that on the front end, he controlled all the property. So he's got all the votes on the front end. So as the restrictive covenants are filed of record, he's in control, and those covenants will say in there, it will have language in there, "You can amend these covenants except the following provisions," one of which will be the retention, detention, fund, maintenance, and responsibility, and the schedules associated with those. Those cannot be amended without county authority, without the board having.
Is there a statute that gives the term of a covenant? That it, are they just part of the covenants? Because most of the time, they look like 20 years.
Yeah. That's right.
That's right.
It's a private agreement, and the term of it is.
Most of the times, the ones I see are 20.
25.
And then when we have the problems, they're 20 years.
Yes.
And the covenants are gone.
Most of them have automatic renewals. Automatic renewal. 20 years, an automatic renewal, five year, 10 year, and almost over.
Well, it depends.
What enforces it though?
What we have seen in the past, unfortunately, is that the auto renewals are reversed of what they need to be, and it says, "These covenants will lapse unless 75% of the homeowners agree to extend." That is not the way it should be. It should be, "These covenants will renew unless 75% vote to rescind them." That's the way it needs to be set up. Well, we can control that on the front end. We'll look at those provisions. We'll say, "It's auto renewal and it's in the correct order." Yep. Number one. Number two, it's got a bar to any amendment without county board supervisor authority. So I think we can control this without instituting what, in my opinion, may be a too-aggressive approach by simply just lumping it over on the developers and say, "Y'all got it for five years regardless."
What does our regulation today say on retention ponds?
We don't have any warranty of any kind. So this is much better than what we have as proposed. Now, we may all sleep good at night knowing that the developer's on the hook for five years under a warranty, but let's be reminded about something. We don't typically see major problems with retention ponds until well after five years. Well, even under your best-case scenario as proposed, you're not going to be looking at the developer, because five years, he's off the hook. And you've got nothing.
But this allows us, before that final surface wear goes down, to be sure that that retention pond is 100% good. That could be three years down the line, four years down the line.
I think the word I used was pristine. We want a pristine retention pond.
I think, I mean, I think the, really, the goal is to give more responsibility on the retention ponds at a longer time, because honestly, I think it was brought out the other night, the five years is really, there's probably not going to much go wrong within that five year. It's going to be that 10 to 20 year, and what we're seeing is more 20. The problem I can see is trying to keep it, you know, the HOA active and it's their responsibility. And I don't know how you're going to do that. But on the other side, what else you going to do?
Yeah, so.
I mean, five years is up anyway.
That's your option. Your option is to look at the developer for some limited period of time. They're telling you that five years is going to create issues for them with their lenders. That's a very real issue. And, I mean, we need to take note of that. You can either have a five-year window where you feel like you're doing pretty well, and you've got some teeth in it, and then nothing, or you can try to control it by making sure that it's in as good a shape as it could possibly be at the time that the development is really online for purposes of an HOA functioning.
I think, I mean, personally, I think that's going to be the best we can do.
Yeah.
I don't know how you're going to mandate the HOA though.
No, no, no.
I mean, we don't do it, so how, but in the restrictive covenants, I don't know how strong that's going to be.
Keep in mind one thing, that, you know, I think most of our developers are going to be astute enough to make sure that the HOA is properly funded on the front end. Okay? So where there's this, as lots are coming online, they're going to go ahead and start instituting the annual dues associated with the development on the front end. As those lots are sold, they're starting to collect dues. So you'll see some funding mechanism already in place, right? So there'll be some money there, some seed money and some other things that'd be in place. There'd be a separate fund for the detention pond. That's what's being proposed, totally separate. So common area maintenance and all that other stuff that the HOAs typically have would be over here in one pot, detention is over here in another pot. And in the covenants, it will have a base amount below which the detention fund cannot go below. And if it does go below, they have to kick enough dues back in. They're mandated to come back in and replenish that fund. So I think, I'll let Mike jump in, one of the things that occurred to me, if we see any issues with retention ponds that are new, in new developments, it's basically silting from construction activity.
That's correct.
Yeah, all right, well, that'll be dealt with at the time the wearing surface is going down.
Because the wearing surface can't go down until we get to 80% completion anyway more and less.
Well, I mean, that's our rule that we use. That's our rule of thumb.
But we said it on the front.
Yeah, but we'll be, the point being this, Mr. Buster will control when the wearing surface is going down. And it will be at that time that they will have to, the developer will have to bring the detention pond up to compliance, whatever our consulting engineer says that is.
What is the warranty on that wearing surface from the time right there at that age? When we?
We haven't gotten to that one yet.
I know we haven't, but this may tie into me, to our retention pond.
Yeah, lawyer answer? It depends. If it's an arterial street and you're going to have continued development activity that's crossing that street, that warranty is two years. If it's a non-arterial street, in other words, further development activity is not accessing that, that's a one-year warranty. That's what's being proposed.
I'm not sure that I would not tie those somehow to that detention pond. If we're warranting the street, then maybe consider putting that detention pond in there too, for that one year or two year, whatever it is.
I don't see the wording thing.
Is that confusing, what I'm saying?
No, sir. That's not confusing to me. So you're saying, let them bring it into compliance and put a commensurate warranty.
The same as that street, if we're going to be.
A commensurate warranty on the detention pond that relates to whatever the warranty on the wearing surface is. Yes. Okay.
The only, the one thing that I thought of, and a lot of times, you know, developments aren't really as grass, established on some areas, and that could create the silt issue. And that's the reason I questioned a little bit, maybe, you know, if you move out and the subdivision has, like I said, until everything's grassed and established well, and I know your yards and all are, but I've seen cases where the adjacent bank and things behind houses is really not, and areas over here are not, or maybe the, and if you had to do some work on the retention pond, then that would not be a grass, maybe not be a grassed area, and so it may have some erosion. So I could just see, let's just assume you had to do some work on it to bring it up to standard or what we required. That's really, the only question I had of maybe holding more, a little more time on the retention pond, and I'm open for any suggestions on that.
It shouldn't have a bad, as bad a taste with the lender if you already got a warranty out there on the road. I mean, you just don't go further than that.
Right.
But it would take care of things like what Jared's saying.
What you're saying, Steve, is, and what's being proposed is, in essence, it's basically, it's codifying, it's putting in words the way that we have been addressing the surface course warranty. Yes, sir. Okay? That's the way we've been doing it. We're just actually putting it in the ordinance now. It's a little different from what the actual subregs say, because it only refers to one year warranty. But, and I'm not picking on Tim, but it just so happens that what sort of drove this whole discussion was what was going on in Tim's development. And that is that, by virtue of the way the land laid out and by virtue of the way the development progressed, he was necessarily having to travel over the same streets that had been overlaid to get to future development, to future phases. So to work out the arrangements, because we knew we were going to probably tear up some roads doing that, although I think it's worked out better than we had hoped, that what we came up with was just a little bit of a hybrid, just a workout with Tim. We said, "All right, on those roads where you're having to send construction traffic right back over the top of a wearing surface, we want a two-year warranty, and we'll release a letter of credit." And that's, that worked. It worked well, and so we felt like it could work as a model moving forward, and that's how it's codified. I don't have an issue with us including the retention pond at that same moment, just simply add it as an item of warranty, as long as it's understood that it'll be, it's just a part of the developer's warranty letter, that we get a warranty letter from the developer that says, "The surface course is down. Mr. Buster has reviewed it. He finds that it is adequate. He doesn't have any issues with it. Here is my one-year warranty." That comes from the developer. We can ask them to add in there, and the retention pond is covered by this warranty.
I don't want to be hard, but in my district, I probably have a half a dozen detention, neighborhoods that have retention ponds that are not functioning, and some of them are not very old. And, I mean, and some, a couple of these subdivisions had water, because detention ponds didn't work, water got in some houses. It's more severe than a road that breaks down when it goes, when the detention pond doesn't work. I mean, so anyhow.
I got a question about the wording. Not to beat this horse totally to death, but both of these that we've made changes to reference first phase, why would we not just put applicable phase that, because we'll have different drainage ponds for different phases, right? So why are we using? So why are we using first phase on both of these?
The intent there is, is to point out that it's the first phase utilizing that basin.
But we're going to have a second phase and a third phase and they each may have their own pond, right?
Yes, so they would be the fir-, they're not the first, and, and we thought this was clear, but it may not be. If the second phase had its own detention, it would be the first phase using that basin.
Hmm, okay, alright.
If I, does that make sense?
I do.
And you understand that's distinguished from the possibility that you may have three phases using the same basin? Regional detention, anyone?
Well, in that case, this is not going to address it.
Yep, we need to make sure that we have room, flexibility, that the language accommodates the possibility that you could have a very large detention area that's going to serve multiple phases of development.
So you're warning if, let's say there was three phases, make it simple, then?
However it needs to be worded.
Well, it'd have to be worded that, that, that you'd warranty till the completion of all of it.
Whatever phases are using that particular pond. I think Jay's got the right word there. He's not a lawyer, he's not allowed to use accurate descriptions.
And I certainly wasn't going to try, that's for sure.
Yeah, I'm just borrowing what he said there and suggesting that's probably the right word.
You're not a lawyer?
Okay, okay, and let's just say you finished, uh, phase three and then, oh, look here, with some more land came over here available and this same land could use this retention pond, then how would that, where would that go?
Yep, it's a good question. What do you think, Tim?
I've already warranted, I'm out of it and now I got a new one that's using it, which obviously is going to draw more.
We're probably talking about a universe of development activities, various tiny.
Yeah, right, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there because it could happen.
I think Tim will say something.
Yep, it's totally up to them, this is a, this is an open meeting. So if the chair wants to hear from, uh, the developer community, you might be able to get some information.
Yeah, Tim, you want to address that real quick while we're here? Just kind of brief, so we can keep moving.
Two notes, the first is that, uh, Mr. Gaines said he had ponds in newer subdivisions that they were having problems with. You know.
And on?
Yes, sir, not, not to be short, but that, that's not every developer's fault.
Right.
You know, at this point, we're going to have the county looking at them to assure that you don't have that issue going forward. So, you know, I kind of think that we would like to, you know, let the HOA take these ponds over once we've developed however many phases are going to flow into it and that kind of thing. But to the point that someone annexed more land into that subdivision, I think they're going to have to come back to you with a preliminary plat and do all of those things. And I think at that point, you have the ability to say, you know what, we'd love to see you develop it, but you're flowing into this pond. This pond's going to be yours for X amount of time until after that's developed, which would flow with whatever warranty I'm having to put on a brand-new pond. So I think that would be the way to address that.
You put him, your new warranty would start based on the new, uh, plat?
Yes, sir, if it flowed into that basin.
Right.
Yes.
Well, that's kind of what I was getting at, it has to be something to protect that.
Right, yeah. That way the homeowners aren't catching on to some new cement.
Right, because they're, they're the ones that.
The plat's always coming back to you guys. Buster stands up and says, you know what, he's got a multi-phase detention pond, he doesn't want, he doesn't want to warranty it. I can't recommend that you approve plat.
Alright, Tim, you good with that wording then? Any additional phase increases an additional warranty, is that right?
Yeah, we'll make that work, I'll give a credit.
You need to marinate on that.
I mean, I see, exactly, I'm saying, we've been maintaining this all this time and now this new development's coming in. It's not our place to then have to take care of it because he's the one going to be potentially silting up our, uh, detention ponds.
That's right.
So I think then it's almost going to have to be evaluated and revert back to the, the new phase development.
Alright, section of 301-2.
Uh, this covers the, uh, master drainage plan, the, uh, we needed to clarify this and, and the intent was not to, uh, now this, keep in mind, is, is not a final drainage plan. This is a master on the whole development, uh, not on each specific phase. So what we're trying to do is make sure that the developer has looked at the whole development to the point where he's managing water on the whole development. Yeah, we had one-foot contour intervals in there, uh, the county has some readily available LIDAR that you could do that, but there's no sense in getting to one-foot contours on this because five-foot contours can certainly show you the drainage patterns. And we also, uh, they had to put direction of flow arrows to show us where, where they're taking all the water. So this was just a clarification request that they requested yesterday, we, we had no problem with it.
Okay.
Okay, Steve?
The next, uh, 301-03 follows up on that too. It was just a little bit vague there on the grading plan. We went ahead and decided to be specific. Now, this is a grading plan on each phase that it needs to be to one-foot contours, uh, and they can use LIDAR that's readily available. Uh, but there again, now we're getting down to the point where we're looking at lots in phases and we need to know how each one of those drain. So it, uh, it just, we needed to just, just, it was just a clarification. One of the engineers that was here yesterday just said, I, I, to protect me, I would like that clarified a little bit more and we certainly had no problem, uh, adding that to clarify.
Well, the one that questioned me about it, I thought before we were having the surveyors stamp it and now we're having engineers do it, is that right?
The grading plan would be an engineering design, it wouldn't be a surveyor's design. The, the grading plan would be how you're going to handle the waste, not, now, the, a surveyor could stamp a topographic survey, uh, which really wouldn't require a stamp, but they could stamp a topographic survey. But this actually has design on it.
Alright, okay.
I've got a question for probably both of y'all. When we have our preliminary conferences and development plans, at that point, are we going to be looking at this, uh, grading plan? Grading plan? The five-foot for, for the overall and, or, I mean, just for instance, somebody's got 250 acres and they file, they come in with a pre-constru-, pre-construction conference and it lays out their lots and it shows the topo and they're mining it, say, or, or moving dirt because they got high spots and low. Who's going to go out there and say, oh no, you went seven foot instead of six? Right here, where you got in some good dirt?
Right.
Who, who will be looking at that? Who'll be out there surveying it, shooting it?
Well, on the, on the master drainage plan, that's, that goes kind of back to, falls right in line with the five-foot intervals.
Right.
Uh, we, we're not concerned about that. We're just concerned that water here, they said was going to go that way and it still is going that way. Once you get to the grading plan of, of the subdivision, now, now they're putting elevations on streets and things. So when, when Renee and them go out there to look at a, they've issued a building permit and they're saying, okay, this is the finished floor we want our, uh, house to be at. No, in the rough grading plan, it needed to be this elevation because the house next to it is a foot higher and you don't want that difference in elevation. So, uh, there's no intent to go back and actually, uh, re-survey everything that they've done. Does that, does that make sense?
I've got one that's in mind where they're moving a good bit of dirt and doing it with, uh, the way they're supposed to go about doing, we're now into the phase of a pre-construction conference and I'm sure this is going to be a two or three, four-year development, but on his plans, it's going to show, uh, soon, the grading, uh, of this master plan. And if they're moving 50 loads a day, uh, this may not look at all like it did when we got that plan a year down the road. And who's going to look at it and say, well, now the water's not going like we thought it would go? Or, I mean, is there any inspection on that or, or is this just fluff in the?
No, I, I think on the rough grading plan, uh, actually, I, I think this is one of the biggest pluses you have in the development ordinance is, is this rough grading plan. Because what, to try to explain that, it basically, whether, whether the road is at elevation 305 or 307, whether it ends up that way, not as critical as, as long as the lot is in proportion to the street. So the rough grading plan is going to include the street too. So it's going to show that water from on the north side of the street, it's there, here's how they're handling the water, here's how they're stair stepping their lot, their house paths and so forth in relation to the street. So whether, because in, in, in design, they may have to make some modifications and they may have to decide to lower their street three feet for some reason. Uh, they need some more dirt for some more lots or something. So what it's going to do is, it's going to allow us to say, no, alright, you had to lower the elevation of your street three feet, so now those lots proportionally, you need to lower them too. So we're not holding them specifically to that elevation.
Margin.
It's all relative to where everything else is. It, it could, I keep using my hands, but it's like a, like a floating model. If the model's here and then it dropped, has to drop down, then we just want everything to move proportionally with each other. Does that make sense?
It does, it's just in the last year, drainage has probably got the, the biggest issue that we face, at least in my district anyhow. And, uh, somehow we got to get out in front of this because it's going to get worse the more we develop and the faster the water's going to run.
That's, I, I think, and I don't want to put Mr. Weaver on the spot, but I think you would agree that this is going to cause them more work on the front end than, than they would maybe normally do on the lots. And they're going to always grade the streets and all, but the lots, uh, with this rough grading plan have to be thought out at an earlier stage as far as the elevations up. So I, I feel, we feel like we're being proactive on addressing what you're talking about, Steve.
And this is all new, correct?
Correct, yes.
And, and a lot of this is so that we'll be able to go out to the builder, keep the home builders from going crazy on the lots.
That's right.
Well, I mean, the.
Can I ask you a question?
Sir? Let me ask you and then you answer me. This, you know, what I don't want is for someone to say, I want to do a dirt pit. And we turn them down and we say, this is not a good place for a dirt pit. Well, then I'm going to develop it and file somewhat of a plan. And they move dirt for two or three years and say, I'm just getting ready to develop it. But you're out there digging and, I mean, of course you're selling the dirt, you're putting in dump trucks and selling it. I mean, I, and I'm not saying a developer shouldn't be able to sell the dirt, you at least make, make some money where you can. But is this right here going to make it where we have a plan and he's going by that plan as far as the contour of the land and the way it's going to drain?
Yes.
To stop a rogue person from trying to go around your back and, and do something that wouldn't be approved?
There's two answers to that question. One is if it's a rogue person.
They're going to beat us anyhow.
He's probably never going to develop it anyway.
Right, you're right.
He's going to mine it, go away, there's nothing, nothing in the ordinance to do with development that I've heard is going to control that. But to answer the other question, as far as me going in and changing elevations and things, just like Parker said, the streets are going to determine what elevations I use, the storm drain pipes are going to determine, so there's only a certain amount of dirt that I can go in there and take and everything's still flush. So as he said, is that if I lower something, that whole model will load. So there are many factors in the streets, the storm drain, those things that are going to govern me doing the proper elevations on the land to bring the water out. The rogue guy, he's just.
He's going to beat us anyhow.
Well, I think by us doing this, are we not now, pretty much in essence, cutting out that possibility? Of somebody coming in and just mining their property now?
You, you now have the ability to police what's happening in that situation, Jay, if you have the, uh, staff and the awareness that is going on and that a, an analysis needs to take place.
Well, I mean, we all know that's been a workaround for several years in our county.
You, you would have.
If we didn't approve the mining permit, okay, we're going to develop it and go to mining, yeah.
You will now have a basis to withdraw, rescind that permit the development side of that equation.
Alright. Okay, so y'all good with this?
Alright, let's go to, uh, 302-7, sorry for that delay, Jay cut Steve up here on the table.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
You want to touch 301-4?
Yeah, I thought you were just combining 301-3 and 301-4, is that what you did? Did you combine both of those?
No, it was 301-2 and 301-3.
Okay, alright, so go over 301-4.
301-4 is, uh, was a, a note in there that addressed medium density and that said that the, uh, lots all had to be graded within one foot of the back of curb, uh, or the edge of asphalt. And, uh, this can cause some extreme heartache, uh, in, in areas where the topography makes that next to impossible. Uh, and the main concern, there's drainage there again. Uh, and so what we propose, what's proposed is that, uh, in the medium density, that there has to be a swell,
Last soil.
Constructed, uh, between each lot and the runoff can go to the front or the rear of the lot. But it, it would be caught by the swells on the sides of, of the lot and then go, uh, to the front or the rear. The only way that the wa-, the drainage could continue, uh, to the side of the lot is if it was adjacent to a, uh, a common area, then you wouldn't have to have that swell. You could drain, if you were next to the detention pond, your lot wouldn't have to have a swell on that side. It could drain straight to the pond. But if you're, if you've got houses on each side of it, you've got to have a swell on each side of your house to catch the water so you're not dumping it on your neighbor and then you take it either to the front or rear of your lot.
So the one foot is out, but is there any footage that would, I mean, what, what if the house is four foot below the street level? That'd be a heck of a swell.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? These are not something that says.
Well, I, I think what we're going to see there, and, and we're going to go back, your rough grading plan should show you that when that house is below the street like that, there's nowhere for that water to go. If the next street is, if there's two parallel streets and the next street is six foot lower than that street, then it may can go on, between the next two houses into the next street, so, uh, or, or a parallel ditch there to the road. So I, I don't know that there is a magic number there. The intent is just that we're, we're telling them, we're looking heavily at drainage in this.
So why did y'all put the one foot in there to begin with? I mean, I understand that's too, that's being too hard.
I, I think that was a request, Renee, did that come from y'all's office maybe in the medium density that, uh?
Well, perhaps the size of the lots, for those smaller sized lots.
And I think that was just, there was an issue on the smaller lots not being able to drain. So, uh, the one foot was the first attempt to try to make that happen and then obviously in conversation, we realized, wait a minute, that, that could be a logistical problem at some point. So, uh, let's just clarify that they got to make it drain.
Well, I think, I mean, it was done, Steve, to try to keep from that house being four foot below the road, I'll be honest with you.
Well, that's what we're working, that's what we want to accomplish.
We looked at some last week.
That's what I deal with every day out here.
And they had three foot of water in their front yard.
No, that's what we're trying to.
Are we going to see that at the master grading stage?
Yeah, the rough grading plan, I mean, I, 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 I'm comfortable that we're going to see that house is four foot below the street and it's a problem.
Right.
Like I said, unless it's drained to the next street, which is.
They're going to show us the problem on the front end.
Why did we not see this, what he said 10 years ago? He's, he's telling me we're going to see it now, but why do we have so many that we didn't see?
No, you put me in a precarious situation.
That's right, you're up front in the front row. You moved up.
Where you're going, Chris.
Okay, alright.
Well, you know.
I don't want to talk about my best friend.
Okay.
The problem, the problem is.
I'm sorry.
The poor, the, the homeowner, most homeowners don't even see this and think about the way drainage is. I mean, I, I mean, I have them in the rural areas build a house down in a bowl and they wonder why they're flooding. You know, you don't want to say, well, look where you are, you're built down a pond.
And I'll make this other comment, you know, when we have a challenging piece of property that I'm developing, I try to get my builders to drop brick shelves and things. So the one neighbor's not sitting up here and one's not sitting here. Their slab is, but their yard isn't. Because I get this builder to drop his brick shelf so that when he can, when he does his grading, his yard is down here. So his floor may be three feet in the air, but his yard's down here with his other neighbor. Some of this goes back, guys, you know, to county inspectors, city inspectors, those guys going out there and looking at the situation and talking to. and talking to the builder about it. You know, we the developer, you know, we, I, I won't say we, I try to get my builders to always do the right thing. But on the one hand over here, I'm, I'm trying to get this guy to give me his money. And on the other hand over here, I'm, I'm telling him, "You can't do this, you can't do that," all these things. So sometimes it takes the building inspector also...
Yep.
To help out a little.
That way you don't have to be the bad guy.
Not as much.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We're, we're in a new phase now and it's a hilly topography. I've got them putting gravel in their driveways. It's not requiring new ordinance. I've got them dropping brick shelves. That's not requiring new ordinance. So I'm trying to do everything I can because I want a good positive subdivision also. And when people write about their house on Facebook or would say, "Move to Greenfield Station," you know, it's great. I don't want them splitting, you know, if my house wasn't floating, I'd be happy. But at the same time, your inspector have to, whether it's county, city, and I'm not just talking about your inspector, the inspector, have to step up a little bit and do more than drive by and say, "You know what? There's electrical in, there's plumbing in, move."
And with this language, you'll, you'll have the ability for your inspectors to say, "We don't see a swell here. Uh, so we're not gonna issue a certificate of occupancy until we see a swell there." So I think you can be protective with, with the ammunition that you have here.
The thing about it though, they need to get their, they as the builder, needs to
get it right when they put that wall and all in there. Otherwise, then you're up against this thing, "Well, man, I've already got my slab here. I've already got this here."
Then you make them put in a retention wall. You do that about once, they'll get it right.
Right.
Alright, everybody get on 301.4, Jay, Steve, Arthur. Alright, 302.7.
This covers the uh, haul bond and there were some questions about the uh, how long the haul bond lasted. And so we uh, did some clarification here. Uh, and basically you'll see that uh, the main change is at the end, the haul bond should be returned to the developer upon repair of the damage to the haul route streets causing, caused by the hauling operations to the development covered under the haul bond as determined by the county engineer or is designated. So basically that was just a clarification. There was some concern about when does the haul bond end? Uh, and that just...
There's quite a bit of discussion.
Was to clarify that.
For you to know about that. And it was because if we leave this there, here, and then somebody else starts hauling in there, you know, how, why am I responsible for it? So I mean, it's kind of, I can understand some of that.
While we're on this subject, that we, we probably, I'm probably gonna, gonna get Tim to introduce where we've got haul bond there, would uh, open that up to letter of credit as well. Because I don't, we're using haul bond as an omen culture, but in reality around here, we take letters of credit. And that's what banks are used to dealing with. That's what developers are used to dealing with. And that's more than likely gonna be the security is a letter of credit is what I prefer, to be quite honest with you. So we, we probably wanted, the only difference may be the reference here to haul bond. It may be letter of credit.
Alright. Like where, just one sentence, and I'm okay with it as long as I'm clear that I'm not, uh, whether a haul bond will be required shall be made in the sole discretion of the Rankin County Road Manager or Rankin County Engineer, which decision shall be final to where a developer or, or builder can't come in here and say, "Look, guys, I mean, with us, it's gonna be, we won't have any..."
Well, the, the, that's, I introduced that language uh, as a way of clarify who's in charge. Ultimately, if we get into a situation where we're dealing with a developer and it can't be worked out amicably, then the, somebody's gotta make the final call.
That don't need to be us?
Well, it will be essentially through your...
Oh, we can fire him.
Staff.
Yeah, I guess there is that.
We can fire him and put somebody else in there that had it everywhere.
We just had a quick conference here and we would agree with what y'all said.
Okay.
Well, I don't, I'd really rather not have that, but it, it...
It's still gonna come back to you anyway, Steve, cause I gotta bring it back to the board for you to approve it anyway.
Just leave it alone.
I shouldn't have brought that up.
Well, the, the language is broad enough.
I shouldn't have brought that up.
The, the language is broad enough for y'all to authorize, essentially authorize.
You ain't gotta get rid of it.
Yeah, I shouldn't have brought that up.
Somebody's gotta be able to put the gavel down and say, "This is how it's gonna be."
Okay, that's my fault. I asked him about it. Come on, let's move forward.
Alright, uh, 306.1 and 4. Is this, did you already cover this in that first section?
Covered it.
Okay, so we're in section 306, storm water detention retention.
Yes, and that basically is just uh, we were, was a little bit of an oversight. Uh, the ponds, it, it originally said that the pond couldn't be over three feet deep. It can be over three feet deep, but it has to be fenced. So we just clarified that, that uh, if the basin's over three foot deep, it has to have a six foot fence around it.
307.8, Tim?
Is that, is that normal?
That's dry detention.
That's correct, yeah. That's not a detention.
For dry detention, it's usually fenced.
If it's any deeper than that, you gotta stock it.
Well, I mean, if it's less than three foot, it's gonna grow up lily pads because...
No, no, it's dry detention.
I understand now when you say that. I understand.
Alright, 307.8, Tim?
Okay, this covers the, and we've already touched on this. Craig did a good job a while ago talking about the uh, collector streets versus the arterial streets. This uh, reduces the uh, warranty to one year on uh, collector and, and then two years on the arterial streets. So if you're, if it's a, a street in the subdivision that's uh, not gonna have traffic on it uh, much anymore except for the local traffic to those homes, it would go to one year. Two year would be the main drag down the middle that was going to phase two or phase three. It would have uh, another year ahead of date.
Right.
Alright.
Do you have a question on that?
Three.
Go ahead, Mr. Weaver.
Do you still have your letter of credit standing in the letter of our fund?
I thought we were going to a one year rather than two years.
What's that? Which one? Where we on?
On the letter of credit?
301.
Warranty of the road.
307.8.
One year on off the main drag, two year on main drag where additional construction is moving forward.
Well, what if there's not additional construction?
We're not collateralizing, we're not collateralizing the warranty.
No, that, that's...
We're not collateralizing the warranty.
Never mind. I'm sorry.
Alright. Okay. Sure good with it, I am.
Alright, um...
I'm glad everybody knows you're speaking for the whole Home Builders Association.
I like it. Hey, Kristen's got her own shock collar back there. I see. That's good. Alright, 309.2, Tim?
This covers uh, water for the subdivision. Uh, and basically what, this is a clarification that uh, in the past, the developer was not allowed to start any construction uh, until we got an approved letter from the Department of Health uh, saying that the water plans were approved. What we're allowing now is that they can start construction, but they can't lay the uh, base asphalt until the uh, we have the letter from the Health Department approving the water. We do have to have an intent to serve. We're not gonna let them start without an intent to serve from the Health Department. And uh, and we went, Craig, this is the one you said you would totally defer to us and I talked to uh, county engineer about it. And he's comfortable with it. Uh, so we would, to, just to kinda set up the scenario, the Water Association or whoever would give an, a, a letter of intent to serve to the developer. The developer would provide that to us. When we reviewed construction plans, the issue now is a lot of these associations require their own engineer to design the water system in the subdivision. And uh, it puts a developer at a little bit of a sit steel because it may take them quite a while to do that. So uh, in this scenario, the developer, at his risk, could uh, go on and start the uh, earthwork, dirt work operations and so forth. Uh, he just could not lay the base asphalt until those plans were approved.
A prime example is we've had a set of plans, construction plans at the engineer's office since May, I think it's the 26th. We've yet to have them approved because two weeks ago, we finally got that letter for that, you know, the letter from the Health Department. That's how long it took the Greenwater, Greenfield Water Association to get everything to their engineer and their engineer to get it designed and get it to the Health Department. So we lost basically May, we lost June, July, and part of August just waiting on something that was gonna happen anyway.
Are you, are you able to sell a lot at, during that point, during that time?
What, the, what, what we're talking about is we take construction plans to the county engineer to have it approved.
Yep.
And the way the ordinance reads now is we have to have the Health Department's letter to go with that, saying that they blessed the plans. Well, that took us almost three months in this instance. So now the ordinance would read that we have to have a letter from Greenfield Water Association saying that they will service water. But it'll still go through the same phase of construction. We'll go in, do our dirt work, put our sewer in, do our storm drain in. By the end, the engineer has everything back from the Health Department. We just go forward and start watering.
But the, the risk you, the, I mean, probably won't ever happen, but the risk you run is you start all this and then the water company says, "Nope, we're not doing it." Isn't that correct?
That would be, that would be...
Yeah, but, but that falls on you. That, I mean, right.
Unless you've sold the lot.
You can't sell a lot because you can't...
Don't ruin it.
No, if you're building on a county road.
Oh my gosh.
Not a county road.
Sorry?
Not a county road yet.
Not a county road yet.
No, I'm talking about specifications.
He's talking about the beginning of the meeting.
If you're out there building on a county road, these, these county water associations, you know, I mean, they hold it and...
That's what I was trying to ask.
You, and I, I mean, I've got one right now that sold three lots and the water association's out, "Hope we can run water down there."
Yeah, that's true.
Uh, you know, that somebody's gonna have to pay forty thousand dollars to run a six inch line for these, and they've already sold two lots. And that's what I was, I'd rather...
That's a good point. Weaver, that is a real good point.
And that's an unplanned subdivision, so I...
That's, that's the opposite.
Two different, two different points.
I think you have to have a completely separate ordinance.
I think you're right, Steve. I think you're right. That's unplanned. Aren't that right? Ain't that unplanned?
We're reviewing there. We're having pre-construction.
Well, we're, well, there you go. He says they're having pre-construction. Reviewing it now. I mean, he's saying it is a planned one.
This is part of, this is part of a subdivision ordinance. What y'all, what you're talking about, and it can happen, it happens all throughout the county, is they make the assumption, "Yeah, we're gonna break up this, this tract of forty acres into five lots, but by God, we forgot to go see Greenfield or show all, wherever that water association, make sure they'll service it." And the developer says to that guy, that buyer doesn't understand the whole scheme of things. And now the buyer's stuck out there having to pay ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
Forty.
Forty, whatever to get water. They will have to drill away on his choice. That's his price. The buyer beware. I mean, that's just kinda something. We can't solve everything.
Yeah, but isn't that why we just said, "If you're gonna do this, uh, you're gonna have to come sit down and talk to us." That way you make you aware of things. I like that. Because that makes the, the guy that's buying the land...
Of course, what, what we're talking about here, don't forget, they still must bring the letter of intent to serve. So...
When?
That, that's before they start any sewer installation, road development, or anything else. That goes in with the construction plan. Yeah, the letter intent to serve. So it's short of design from the water. That's where it's been up to now, Steve, is we've made the developer bring the engineer drawings from the Water Association as a part of the approval process on our side. We're just, we're going with a letter of intent, which is short of that to move the process forward.
It just, we, we're still not protecting the, I mean, I know, the buyer beware, but after they buy it and they get hung with it, they call us. I mean, they, they like...
Well, I mean, I'm with you on that one now, cause I, I'm same situation.
Uh, and we don't have anything that goes to that point to where, I mean, after the second or third lot is broke off and sold and she sees it and she alerts 911 and then they alert us and we're saying, "Well, that's not a subdivision." Well, we're telling them it is a subdivision. And then, I mean, you may have ten. The guy may end up having forty, fifty acres and he's got ten. And about the third one that sells finds out, "There's no water." And you're gonna have to run under the road and run a half a mile of six inch line. And we didn't address it in our pre-construction conference.
Good point. Very good point.
Right. It, it's a, it's a difficult issue.
And this doesn't affect the kind of stuff they do.
Of course, Water Association's a private nonprofit. It's not a part of the county.
I know. I mean...
That, that makes it difficult.
I just wanna be able to alert them that you need to be aware of this.
When, when that plan comes to us for a pre-construction conference, if it's three or four, ten lots, I would like for them to have a letter of intent.
Yes.
From the, from some source of water, even if they said, "We're gonna dig our own well," just so that...
How does Buster normally address that?
I think that would be more at the preliminary class stage, the pre-development conference is, is talking, where you would, I think you would tell them exactly what you said. Before you go any further, you need to make sure that you have...
Water.
Water. That's the kinda things that the pre-development conference, we wanna try to talk to as many of those things as we can so there's no u-hoes as we do the next day.
Listen, I'll give you a prime example. Stoll Road probably has twelve homes. There's one, I'd say, three million dollar home. And I mean, some very nice homes. There's no water out there. Every one of them have a well. And most of them didn't know it until they got out there. Uh, so...
Isn't that what we're trying to cover in the very first paragraph, whatever, I mean, first part? Where you, you sit down and that's why we have it there? I mean, then you, then at least you know.
I guess, Tim, just put it in bowl. Let's cover this first meeting.
I'm, seriously, I'm, I'm...
That somebody needs to know.
I mean, I agree with you right there.
Yeah. A, a nice little checklist would be helpful.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, right there, the very first one on division, subdivision.
Alright, section 310.02?
Uh, same thing. We just talked about the water and the sewer. Uh, the, the plans have to be reviewed by DEQ. Now we're saying you can start uh, with your intent and not, you know, have to wait on that. So same thing.
Same thing there.
You still may follow the same thing. DEQ says no.
Alright, utility crossings, 316.
That's just a clarification. Uh, it said all utilities except drainage shall be placed in casing. We added uh, to the extent drainage, we had sanitary sewer services uh, simply because those have to be put on grade and asking the developer to bore all those on the grade is probably gonna turn out to be more of a headache than a, than a plus. So we just allowed uh, drainage and sanitary sewer services not to be in case.
Well, there's another point about the casing too, about the uh, the way water drains too. The way water seep through, create problems in the road.
Create the sinkhole issue.
Yeah, I can easily do it. I mean, I, I can see that.
Alright.
And on, on the back table, we just uh, under the construction draw, we're DT...
Oh, hey, hang on. I, I, on the casing. I mean, do we wanna case everything?
No.
It's not gonna do the drainage or the sewer now.
Oh, what about water? What about telephone lines and all that?
Well, if you got, if you got the utility and your water line case or something breaks, you can pull it out by cutting the road into it. The only reason we're doing the sewer is just to grade them.
Okay, so we're just doing sewer. We're only doing sewer?
No, we're not doing sewer.
No, we're not doing sewer. Why would you wanna do sewer?
It's hard. You got, I mean, sewer grades are narrow, so I mean, you're talking about the tent.
You're talking about the pipe itself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so try to put that in casing. It's hard too, especially when you're bored, you know. But I mean, the worst case scenario, you gotta cut the street with your sewer or your, or your drainage pipe. The rest of it, you shouldn't be able to pull out in casing. Excuse, pull out dig on this east side road, pull out in casing and fix and require provide damage and wreck.
Alright. Alright, anything else on the fee schedule on the back?
Basically what we did there is, they had just asked for some clarification. There was some issue. Longer streets and longer lengths of drainage, there was just asterisks there uh, to be determined. We just took those charts on out uh, to longer lengths. Uh, that's all we did there. And uh, we did revise our surface asphalt security calculation. Uh, we, we were using a formula that assumed two inches of asphalt, but a lot of the developments now are going with three inches of base, an inch and a half of surface, and another inch and a half of surface. So the final wear of surface is only an inch and a half versus two. You're still getting the same asphalt thickness. They're just saving an inch and a half for the end instead of two. And so that calculation, we just had in there and assumed that you were using two inches.
What is our current? What do we currently require?
We currently require, it's, it's, it's six inches of asphalt. Alright, now, the, the structural number is based on four inches of base and two inches of surface. But if you put three inches of base and three inches of surface in, in an inch, in two inch and a half lift, you actually have a better structural number, which is a better road. Surface has a better number uh, when you're calculating the structural number. And the higher the structural number, the better the road is. Uh, so surface asphalt uses a point four four factor, I believe, and base asphalt uses a point three three, I think. It's, I know, we're not remembering the exact number now. So with three and three, you're getting a higher structural number than four and two.
Alright.
What that is is a developer's call. That's correct, it's, well, the, the, the chart in the regulations say a minimum of four inches of base and two inches of surface to achieve a structural number. So, you're, you're exceeding that, so obviously, if you want to put eight inches of base and four inches of surface, we'd probably take that to two. But then the minimum is four.
Highly unlikely though.
All right, anything else discussion wise on the, uh, adjustments?
We have qualified all the potential contingent liability numbers for the developers. That was a big concern, you were disclosing all that, about what this public schedule was, but everything else has been done as well.
Yeah, the only, uh, yes, the only thing that we can't quantify now is on the haul bond calculation, the asphalt will be calculated at the county's current, uh, six-month price, but that's a readily available number. So, that, that would be the only thing that, uh, and we use an example in, in the, uh, in the spreadsheet for that, but I mean, that would be based on wherever the county's six-month bid is.
What about the timeline on all these meetings and applications, you know, by us adding more things, we're prolonging the time period to get a development going. Have we addressed that at all, or y'all fine with where it is? Uh, is that it?
You know, I, I really hope that we're streamlining this some. I mean, I know we're having more, a few more meetings, but we're, we've come up with checklists and things.
I think so.
I, I think it's gonna streamline the process and with this, this, the pre-development conference, uh, I know Steve's been talking about it a lot. That, that's an important piece of this puzzle, that now is, uh, maybe not with Mr. Weaver, but with some developers, it's, they're, they're bouncing all off the walls because they maybe, they're coming to Rankin County from another county and they're just thinking it's the same way and it's not. So, hopefully, we're gonna get, uh, fingers crossed Renee, hopefully, we're gonna get a lot of this, uh, ironed out in that pre-development conference and these checklists and all, and all that's in the developers, all these checklists. So, they, they're seeing what we're looking for at construction plans, at preliminary plat, at final plat. They're seeing everything that the county engineer's gotta check off of these guys.
But the turnaround time, the year review time, I guess, is what it comes down to. The amount of time the engineer has to go over it and get back to them, and if there's changes made, then it starts to clock back over again. You know, so, that could, yeah, it looked like, when I first looked at it with Greg and them, that we like added forty days to it.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if, once this gets started, I think they'll know what they gotta address up front and go moving to be, you know, I mean, maybe right at first, uh, first, the learning curve.
Hey, Tim, uh, Alan and I had talked about it at one point, and I didn't see it in the revision thing that came out, but it's some kind of clause or area that would allow us to go back to the utility companies if we find them and some kind of harms uh, or destruction that they've caused to an area. Uh, Alan and I talked about that, I didn't see that in the revision plat. Could, do you mind checking with them tonight on that for in the morning?
Yeah, and, and.
Because we wanted, we wanted to hold some teeth against those.
I think we talked about that the other day.
We, we wanted to hold some teeth with those utility companies, coming back on them, defining damages that they've caused from coming down the street, cutting whatever, so, um.
And I may point that to Craig, I'm not sure.
Didn't we talk about that the other day here?
I, I know, I know we've got some issues on the federal regulations and all that's gonna comply to that, but.
So, that, to me, is, is a subject matter that is, that should be addressed in a separate ordinance.
Okay.
Because it's a, it's separate third parties that are involved, uh, in, in how we deal with them. They're using our right of way, and I don't know that it really needs to be a part of what's going on with the developer's side.
Okay.
Through the development ordinance, it, it needs to be addressed.
The main thing is, I just want to get us some kind of ordinance that will allow to hold those utilities companies liable for the damages that, that they come up with. So, if we think we need to address it outside of this, then we can do that as a separate thing.
Yeah, and we, we have to be thoughtful about that because of the federal jurisdiction that's implicated. Whenever you're dealing with Federal Communications Commission areas, we have limited ability to address what they're doing, even though they're in our right way. We have limited ability to address it. It's primarily because they've got the protection of the federal government saying, if it has to do with the provision of federal communication services, we, we exclusively control that and local subdivision, local political subdivisions are not allowed to address or, uh, regulate those areas, except in very narrow-defined circumstances. We have to be, we have to stay in our lane.
I just want to be sure we don't lose it off the radar scope at some point, once we get this through. All right, any other questions or comments on?
One other.
Yes, sir.
I submitted a phase for Greenfield Crossing, uh, in, in May. And that was well before the ordinance talk and all those great things. With the water, health department letter and all those things, that's the one I've been alluding to tonight. I think it would be good for the developer if the items that were in pre-ordinance talks could be approved under the old ordinance. I think it would be the fair thing to do to your developer. This, as I said, this was submitted in May.
Thank you for your comment.
Take that into consideration.
Will do, thank you very much. Anything else on the?
I do, I have one thing, I'd like to hear, see if, uh, our road manager has anything to comment and I'll, uh, to add to this or anything that, that strikes a nerve for him, as well as our building department, with Dwayne or Renee, that, that a law that's gonna fall back on them, so I think they need to, I mean, if you got anything that you think that's gonna be heartburn or something, I think you need to, both of you.
I just got that, I got one, and all I got is really back here on the, uh, federal credit deal. And, and kind of questioning Mr. Weaver and both ways here. You know, we said we're gonna do a two-year warranty on the main drag where the trucks and tractors going in. Well, we drive in there and trucks is going every which way, lumber trucks, everything else on roads that the county's already accepted, then who's responsible?
In, in most instances, and not in every instance, but in most instances, what is happening is, just because the Greenfield Ridge, we had a, our first street that we developed, where all that part A. And part A ran all the way through C, D, E, F, G, H, I. We bonded that road for, we didn't bond it, we put up a le, our letter for two years. But basically, there was absolutely no reason for those trucks to go off of those roads. It made their journey to whatever site they're going to long.
I understand, I know that truck trucker.
Well, Mike, e, even in our area right now, in the overlay district, now the new ordinance, that's taken care of.
I mean, I, I knew in overlay.
In, in the overlay district, Bob.
In the overlay.
Yeah.
And Greg, Greg, Greg had, with a dress, man. Not, not having my Greenfield face here, but just any subdivision you go in and just, I mean, I know how it is. I mean, they get in here, builders get in here, I've done this, so I know builders get in here, get great blocks up, somebody said, I'm going this way. And they start going that way, get dirt or whatever, get around something, and then next thing you know, they're running on wearing services, counting on it.
In, in Greenfield, the street that we had the two-year guarantee on, the warranty on, we had zero pot holes to fix.
Right.
Because the road was built to your specs.
All right, with Tim.
In addition to.
Go ahead, go ahead.
In addition to building your specs, we're now adding another half inch of asphalt, weared surface. So, they're gonna be at a greater spec even than that. And that'll be whether it's a connector or an material street, a half inch of official asphalt.
All right, uh, Mike, let, let me ask to that point. Craig, can you allude to help Mike out on some wording on that? That would give him a little bit extra peace of mind, maybe, at some point?
You know, I, I think the issue's gonna come back to, why was there a failure? And if it turns out that the, uh, the issue is the, is the manner in which the street was constructed, that's gonna fall under that developer's warrant.
So, it'll go back to it, okay.
If the issue is that the, the use of the road is, um, not typical, in other words, somebody's, uh, running a dump truck through there, a hundred thousand pounds in it, then you, you fall back on state law, which says you can protect your public streets from unusual damage. And so, we would look to the, the person that's causing the damage.
So, you feel the way it's set up now, we're okay, they'll cover Mike's?
I think you're covered both ways, so if it's an issue of the construction of the street, that's gonna be a developer issue under the warranty.
Okay.
And if it's an issue of just simply the manner in which it's being used.
Back on the driver.
That's, that's back on the driver.
Okay, Mike gives that?
That's gonna be a tough fix though, because that's a public road.
It is.
That's gonna be a tough one to.
There's always gonna be that argument, which was it?
Yeah.
Is it an issue of construction or is it an issue of use?
I don't see how that's gonna help Mike though, really. I think it's just something that we're gonna have, I mean, there's nothing he can.
We're gonna always have to fight the battle of, we'll always fight that battle.
Just the other day, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna say who Derek was, he tried some county roads, sort of went state roads just as easy and it been a lot shorter. You know, asking to go the other way, and this is what I did with, with Weaver and he said, I'll go with your way on, this is a county road. I'm getting on the road.
You know, that's what I do when I have a white trouble, Mary.
Same thing.
I don't.
That was a joke. If we're recording, that was a joke.
I'll, for the recording, I don't.
But I mean, he, he was going, you know, he was taking a shortcut, five by his plane, and that's what we deal with, you know, every day out here in the county.
All right.
So, what, so all that being said, we hadn't helped you a bit?
Well, we've helped him, we've helped him in RCD.
Overlay district's good. All right, Mr. Renee, anything? All right, great, Jay, I know you had one thing.
Yeah, I just want some clarification on this professional engineer cer- certificate. Did y'all go over this, Tim, and, and know exactly what this means as far as them signing off on all regulations and ordinances that this is built?
You're not talking about, you, okay, the professional engineer certificate has been pulled out of the regs.
Oh, it has?
Yeah, because it's, that, that should have been just a surveyor certificate.
Okay, all right.
That's pertaining to a plat, and the engineer's not really certified under the plat, the surveyor is.
All right.
So, that, that engineer's certificate has been pulled off of that.
What about the fees, development fees? Did we adjust them to where other counties are, are we still more than them?
We did.
No, we didn't. We adjusted fees.
Y'all created a table, your fees are still.
Higher.
On the high side by a good bit.
Well, personally, I wanna, I don't wanna be above Madison.
Personally, I wanna get reimbursed for Buster's and Craig's time.
Yeah, ti- typically, it's a per lot basis, you're seven hundred and fifty dollars, we thank you for that.
Right, yeah.
I think we did talk about that.
We did, we did cover that.
In most municipalities, we pay, there's a minimum. And then, like, in the, in Madison, for instance, in the city, it's a hundred dollars per lot. Okay, they've got a base, and then it's a hundred dollars per lot when you file your final plat on top of that base. County Madison haven't done anything in three or four years, I understand they changed their song, so I'm not gonna say what that is. So, typically, it's a per lot basis. And I just did a subdivision in the city of Madison, we had thirty-four lots, it was thirty-four hundred dollars in a seven hundred and fifty dollar fee when I filed my preliminary plat. And then the thirty-four hundred was filed as time of filing the final plat.
Well, most of the complaints from developers have been financial.
And some of what's gonna drive rankings up is the construction observation fees. And that's, that's gonna make, in order to get back down, you're gonna have to take those out.
Which is what we don't want to do. We want the observation. That's what's got us in the problem now by not being able to.
We didn't, we didn't hear a word about that the other night, Jay.
What?
We didn't hear a word about that the other night.
Observation never came up.
Not one thing, all we heard is just what Mr. Weaver just repeated.
Okay, what about, I know when Alan, when we went over this originally, uh, and when Steve and I sat down with him, he told us that the fees we're at are above other counties. And I personally would not, I don't see why we need to be more.
How much above? I think it was kinda offsetting, where we might have been a few dollars higher on a lot, then their base was higher. It was pretty close, I don't remember being that much.
The marching orders that Alan and Buster were giving was try to.
Cover.
Just as close to break even with these guys sitting there and what they're trying to.
And I don't think we're doing it yet. I don't think that we're, we still haven't gotten to that.
We're not going to, because it's always gonna be, other meetings gotta be had.
That's what I'm saying, uh, uh, one of thirty-minute meetings gonna be an hour and a half.
So, I, I just, we can always sit there and adjust it, we, we try this for a year, year and a half, see, and see what Buster's, uh, inspection fees are gonna be and see how that's gonna play against what we're collecting and, you know, we talk about whether or not it makes sense for us to hire somebody instead, maybe it's supposed to be, but let's give it a year, eighteen months, and come back and visit the fee thing again, and see just kind of, there we are with it. But I, I really wanna try, I don't really care about the other counties, I really wanna try to stay where, where we're getting, I mean, just getting as close as we can and get reimbursed for their time.
Well, I know that we. Anything you've heard, because you've been out in the dirt world and, and the inspectors you're out there, have you heard anything in here that, I mean, reflects into what Bob's saying, anybody, anything that? And, and I want you to be, speak up.
Nothing that would really give the heartburn, uh, I mean, this is pretty much what you do in other areas, you know, it's nothing.
I mean, any of this, increased inspection, feel like responsibility's gonna put on y'all, it's gonna create a problem or put some, um, um, I guess, liability on you, huh?
And in there, takes the building department.
I mean, what it does is, he's gonna pass that cost on to the person that's buying the lot, and they pay it. Or we pass it along to the hundred and fifty thousand taxpayers in Rankin County and they pay it. Because we don't have any money other than what we take in in taxes.
Huh?
Sorry?
Say what?
Paying for quality.
Yeah, right.
For quality, that's right.
Right.
Well, during our, uh, public hearing, we had some developers say that we were gonna drive development out of Rankin County.
I don't think they were talking about that. I don't, I don't think they were hung up.
And ability to qualify some of these contingent liabilities and some of the issues were, were.
Addressed?
We didn't, we didn't do, we didn't do a good job putting that out there, and I think that's been satisfied now. You know, I don't think we're any, I mean, Tim commented, we're doing what most cities do, you know, just to a large degree. You know, we're kinda stepping up, you know, with what we gotta do, but.
The open-ended obligations.
I mean, those inspections.
We've eliminated those to the best that we could. We've eliminated those contingent liabilities. Now they have fixed exposure that they can point to, that a lender can look at.
Okay.
And evaluate. And clearly, they can evaluate the, the fees as kind of, I mean, you put your pencil on paper, do your calculations on the number of lots and the length of streets. You come up with, with the actual cost. We may be a little higher than the surrounding counties.
It's a nicer place to live.
Because we're gonna be asking a lot out of our engineer to watch what's happening now.
But the, I know that we can't do this in this run-through, but probably one thing we should look at going forward is maybe putting some of our subs that developers hire, that they are, come with some references, or they're bonded, or have license, you know, that's probably something we should look at the next run-through. Hopefully, it's not ten years down the road.
Four years from now.
Any, any, any other additional business? All right, that's good, we're gonna entertain a motion to recess till the fifteenth, nine AM. Motion by Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, it'll like sign. Recession till in the morning at nine o'clock, thank you very much.
We don't find out, I guess. I didn't know we'd make that so many changes.